Call the order, the April fifteenth meeting of the City of Seabrook City Council. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag, one state, under God, one individual.
Okay, item 1.1, public comments and announcements. At this time, I'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter or whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Terry Moore.
Terry Moore, G seven zero nine North Meyer, Seabrook. Ready timer, go. Oh, they're already going, here we go. Council members in the City of Seabrook, did you know that Seabrook Police Officers Association, the Gallaston Police Association, and possibly other associations have involved themselves in our city bond election? It's no surprise that many residents feel uneasy, like they can't speak their minds, express their views without fear of backlash. That's not the kind of climate we want in a healthy democratic community. Let me remind everyone, you do not have to be afraid. You do not have to be afraid. Thanks to our system of private ballots, every Seabrook resident can vote their conscience in peace. Your vote is your voice, protected, anonymous, free from interference. No association, no department, and no branch of our city government has the right to intimidate the choices you make in the voting booth. If anyone tries, we need to say clearly, this is not acceptable in Seabrook. Let's preserve our integrity of our community by defending every citizen's right to think, speak, and vote freely. Thank you.
One point, excuse me. 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about community events.
All right. It may not be any surprise that city offices are closed for Good Friday, as they should be. That's this Friday, April eighteenth. The city secretary's office will be open from eight to eleven. Everything else will be closed. Seabrook Easter excursion is coming up Saturday, April nineteenth, from ten to twelve at Rex Mater Park. That's always a good time. And early voting, write this one down, Tuesday, April twenty-second, here at City Hall. Now, this next one's kind of cool, folks. Bingo with badges, Friday, April twenty-fifth, from six to seven thirty PM at Public Works. That is badges, the police department will be there doing bingo and pizza and popcorn and all kinds of cool stuff. You ought to go there. It is fun for all ages. Take your time and show up. I plan to stop by. National Drug Takeback Day, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from ten to two. That is for prescription drugs, folks, don't get the wrong idea. Flag retirement ceremony is coming up the end of this month, on April twenty-sixth, from nine to eleven AM at Bay Area Veterans Memorial. If you have a tired flag and don't know how to get rid of it, bring it there. Election Day is Saturday, May third, from seven AM to seven PM, right here in City Hall. And Keels and Wheels, Concorde Delegance twenty twenty-five is Saturday, May third to Sunday, May fourth, at Lakewood Yacht Club. You can find tickets online, they're, I think, thirty or thirty-five dollars. It's a pretty good deal, a lot of really cool stuff to see. You'll see some cars that you've seen before driving around the roads in there. Some pretty neat event. Is there anything that I have missed?
Anybody else? Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. 2.0 Presentations, 2.1 Presentation of Video Footage of the Highway one forty-six Project from the Beginning to the Current Status of the Project.
So, at a past meeting, City Council requested that we, I got my mic on. The City Council requested that we put together a video of all the footage that we've attained during the construction of State Highway one forty-six. I'd like to commend Mick, she did a really, really good job on this, and so I have the video here for you guys tonight, so I can play it, and if it's okay with you all, go ahead and start it.
Sorry about it, it was on YouTube.
Hey, Sean, thanks a lot. I was the one that asked for that, and just been wanting to see that, thanks.
You're welcome. She did a really, really good job. She put a lot of time into it, so I do want to commend her for the great job she did.
Okay, item three point, item three point, the consent agenda, three point one, approve the minutes of the April first, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Four point oh, bid awards, four point one, consider and take all appropriate action on a bid award for RFP twenty twenty-five dash three dash one ten, HMGP forty-five eighty-five City Seabrook Emergency Operations Center generator to McDonald Municipal and Industrial for the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and all associated documents. This project is an approved HMGP grant for ten percent local and ninety percent federal, though the local obligation will be fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven.
Move to approve four point one.
Second.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Four point two, consider and take all appropriate action on a bid award for RFP twenty twenty-five dash oh-four dash one-ten, HMGP forty-four eighty-five City Seabrook Fire Station Generator to Texan Municipal and Industrial LSC for the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and all associated documents. This project is an approved HMGP grant for ten percent local and ninety percent federal. Local obligation will be eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents.
Move to approve four point two.
Any questions? Yeah.
Who is putting these grants together? Because that's little over two hundred thousand saved the city in those generators.
I think it was our staff.
That's correct.
Our staff.
Great job on that. That's awesome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Five point oh, business, five point one, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-six, annexation of additional property of Porter Houston Authority pursuant to amendment number three of the memorandum of settlement agreement.
Move to approve five point one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Six point oh, new business, consider and take all appropriate action on the creation of a Department of Government Efficiency to review each department in the City of Seabrook.
So, I think this is working pretty well in the federal government. I think we could do this in the City of Seabrook, and anything that we could find that saved the taxpayers' money, I think would be a good, a good thing. So, that's my view of it. So far, ninety percent of the country agrees with what's going on in the federal government. I know we're not the federal government, we're way smaller, but I'm sure there's ways to find and cut waste. So, that's, that's where I'm going with that so far.
I would say postpone that to the new regime, you know, because that's something, I think, I make a motion that we postpone it till the new council comes in in a couple of weeks, and.
Well, I mean.
Just my opinion.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Postpone it? Sure, I'll second it.
All in favor of postponement? All opposed? I want to discuss it. Too late, can't discuss it now. Okay. Six point two, consider and take all appropriate action regarding cleaning the ditch located between the two Carruthers Coastal Garden properties.
So, this is a, this is that little pipe that's underneath the road that goes into Carruthers. I asked about this a couple of years ago, and they're supposed to put like a chain through it, and you get an old tire, and then just drag it through. All it needs is to be cleaned out. There's a whole bunch of dirt in there, and when we get heavy rain, that backs up right there. So, that's all we're doing to ask about it. But, again, it's been almost two years, and it hasn't been cleaned, so that's why I brought it back up.
Has this been mentioned to, to Public Works?
Yes, but it was also mentioned straight to the city manager.
I mean, this is a Public Works issue. Brian?
Can I take care of it?
Okay, but I figured it'd be just as simple as that.
I'm trying to remember which one it was.
Okay, you know, when you, when you're at the garden where they have the twenty-nine plots, and you walk across toward the bay, right there at that, where that swing gate is? That little ditch right there.
That ditch, from that ditch all the way to Pine Gully Road?
Yeah, well, it may need to go to Pine Gully Road, but I'm just talking about mainly that pipe underneath the little, the road.
Travel driveway.
Yeah, correct. There you go. And that, I figured you could take care of it, thanks.
Six point three, consider and take all appropriate action regarding flying American flags on Highway one forty-six, NASA Parkway, rep store from the traffic circle and medians throughout Seabrook.
Okay, um, next year is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of this country. I remember in nineteen seventy-six how big of a deal it was, the way the, the country celebrated it. I think Seabrook should be a part of that, but one of the things that we do is, right now, we fly twenty American flags on Main Street, and that's twenty American flags. And I love it, and the people ask for it, and we did it. But we used to fly them along one forty-six, we used to fly them on NASA one. A lot of the other cities in this, around us, do. Kima, League City, Nassau Bay, Webster, Pearland, you name them, Friendswood, they all fly them, down a lot of their streets. So, my suggestion is, we get them along one forty-six. I understand you have to get Tex dot approval, but it was happened before, you can get it again. Same way with NASA Road one, and then on the medians around the traffic circle and down those neighborhoods, and maybe even parts of Lake Cove, and other neighborhoods if they wanted them too, that have that type of thing. So, right now, we're the only city that doesn't fly them anywhere on the, the main holidays, and I just think we should.
Do we have a budget for this?
Well, I think we could find it, and, you know.
Maybe we can get Doge to look at it.
Yeah, we could.
Joe, on your Main Street flag project that is now dead, I, I think somewhere, I remember you said you'd gotten donations for fifty-five flags, can we count on those flags if we, this goes forward?
Say that again, the, the donations?
When, when you were raising money for the flags on Main Street, I thought you said that you'd already gotten fifty-five flags, and I'm just asking, can we, since that project is now dead, or whatever, it's not going forward, can we use those flags for this project that you're proposing?
Why is the flags on Main Street not going forward?
Well, you've never been able to reach an agreement, and we brought the agreement back up, and there's never been any progress made on it.
Well, all we have to do is sign the agreement, but those flags will be, yeah, but I own, I have about fifty-five flags because I bought them from a, you know, an American dealer that sells them at very cheap price when you buy a bulk, so I was planning on using them for them, but.
Okay, are you going to go forward with the flags on Main Street?
Of course.
Okay. All right, when, when can we expect that to be, and the reason I'm asking is, because we have the Bayside Park project, and I don't want these things to interfere with each other.
We're actually talking about flags along one forty-six, NASA one, and then around the traffic circle. So, I'll take care of the, the flags along Main Street, but the, the main issue that is on the agenda here is, are we willing, is this city willing to fly American flags on the major holidays? I think we should, and right now, we're not.
Joe, I don't disagree with it, we should. I want to see a dollar figure before I vote for it, though. It's, it's the cost of maintaining, replacing, installing, all of those kind of things, how much money we're really talking about. Understand you have some flags available, but they wear out. So, what happens as time goes on? At what point is the city going to have to pick up, and how much?
Is it just for, is it just for next year, Joe, or is this a constant?
Well, this can be, for, well, it's going to have to be done pretty soon if you want to fly them for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of this city, so that's got to be done pretty quick.
What would need to be installed? I mean, are you talking like flag poles, are you talking about the signs, the light poles that we currently have?
Well, a lot of cities put a two-inch, I mean, a one-inch pipe with an American flag attached. The negative part about that is sometimes they lean, and it doesn't look professional. The ones along Main Street are two-inch pipe with a PVC sleeve, and it's buried in the ground two feet, so it's a twelve-foot pipe, and then there's a two-foot sleeve in the ground, permanent, and then it's capped, and then, then you can slide the pipe, so it's really professionally looking, and they're straight. We could do that, but you can do it a lot cheaper if you do a one-inch, but you could do a one-inch sleeve too, and it's just a lot more, it just, it looks fine. So, the, the ones along Main Street cost about eighty-five to ninety dollars per flag when pole the way it was set up for, to do it, but somewhere else, it could be done a little cheaper, I think. But right now, we, we don't fly them, and other cities do, and, you know, I think that's actually a pretty big deal. A lot of people have asked, hey, I'm around these other cities, and they fly them, and we don't. But I'm hearing, obviously, it's a cost.
Well, I mean, a hundred dollars a flag pole, I mean, that sounds doable, I guess how many you're talking? I mean, is there a way we can confirm that number with Public Works, and maybe you get with them on how many you think we need? You know, I think it's really cool, and you come into a town that has the big giant, you know, American flag, that would be a statement piece also to consider, but that's not the idea that you have, so I, I do support the flags, and I think it's a, it's a nice thing to have.
I think we're going to need to check with Tex dot to see what restrictions they would have on one forty-six before we can go forward with that.
And I don't think there is any. They'll, they'll let us put them in the easement. I think we, I think we just need to figure out where, where the money's coming from and get a budget, and get moving on that. How many do we need? We do have that sixty-foot by thirty-foot flag. Fire Department has it. If we could fly that, but the flag pole costs twenty thousand dollars to fly that, to fly that big of a flag, but we could string it up between the two ladders, ladder trucks. I mean, that's a, that's a huge flag. Anyway, I, I think we just need to find, find the money. I'm all for it, if we can find the money, and, and, but it, you know, we're talking a couple hundred flags, if we want to fly them in all these locations, which is somewhat expensive. Anyway, I agree. Let's see if we can find a budget. Six point four, consider and take all appropriate, appropriate action regarding beautification of all City of Seabrook entry and exit points.
Okay, when you drive in on NASA Road one, I've brought this up before, they've, since I originally brought it up, they did mow it, I think they've mowed it a couple times, but it's the property where you come in, and it's El Lago, and then it becomes Seabrook, and it's where Louis on the Lake used to be. It's on the right side, it's the lakeside. The fence is still dilapidated. That ground out there is actually a parking lot, it's asphalt, but there's weeds growing up in it. Like I said, along the fence, the, it's broken, and there's a pipe sticking out toward the sidewalk, and it just doesn't look good, and, you know, everybody's trying to fight for EDC and, and help EDC, because they, everybody wants businesses to come here, but my analogy is like, you invite someone over for dinner, you have a really beautiful house inside, your lawn is not mowed, weeds are everywhere, you got cars and boat trailers parked in your front yard, and your patio and porch is so poorly dilapidated, and yet, you, people walk in and they go, wow, the inside of your home's nice, but the outside of your home is terrible, and that's exactly what I think businesses look at. They, they look at a lot of the little things, and right now, I think we need to do something to fix it, and there's, there's inexpensive ways to do it. The mayor's had some ideas out, it's like the base of a sailboat, and it can be turned different ways to say like, you're entering Seabrook, those are actually really cool looking. The old one was poles in the ground that said, ahoy, this is Seabrook. We could have, when you leave, bon voyage, this is Seabrook. There's a lot of things that we could do, so I just think it, it needs to look better, and it needs to look better really soon if we want to attract business. And yes, you're going to need a budget, but I don't think that would be that expensive.
Joe.
Obviously, that's someone else's property there, and I know code enforcement has been working with them. Sorry to blindside you, Sean, but can you go through the process of code enforcement from the first complaint until it actually gets to a fine?
That's correct.
What are the steps?
So, currently, we have an active case on that site. I actually personally sent an email to Bill Neeson, who was the gentleman who came in and presented the PUD document, and, and went through the approval process. He responded to me at the beginning of the week that he will be meeting personally with a contractor, because we've sent multiple notices, they come out and kind of half-mow it, and you bring it in the basic compliance as far as the mowing, however, the fence still needs to be dealt with, the old buildings need to be dealt with, the old building on the water, so I did respond back to him and ask if I could attend that meeting, so that we were all on the same page of what needed to be addressed. So, we are currently working on that project. Again, there's a due process to this, y'all, all of you've been sitting for a long time. The city doesn't have a hammer to go out and, and force these people into doing something, there's a due process. Ultimately, we will write citations to that individual if they don't come into compliance court. I think we've had this discussion before, that you understand that municipal court in this city cannot make somebody abate a violation, all they can do is fine them. So, if they write it, if we write a ticket, they're assigned a penalty, and they pay the ticket, the process starts all over again. We can't make them come into compliance through the, that process. We just keep writing.
But, can you go through the process of code enforcement from the first complaint until it actually gets to a fine?
That's correct.
What are the steps?
So, currently, we have an active case on that site. I actually personally sent an email to Bill Neeson, who was the gentleman who came in and presented the PUD document, and went through the approval process. He responded to me at the beginning of the week that he will be meeting personally with a contractor, because we've sent multiple notices. They come out and kind of half-mow it, and you bring it in the basic compliance as far as the mowing. However, the fence still needs to be dealt with, the old buildings need to be dealt with, the old building on the water. So, I did respond back to him and ask if I could attend that meeting, so that we were all on the same page of what needed to be addressed. So, we are currently working on that project. Again, there's a due process to this, y'all. All of you've been sitting for a long time. The city doesn't have a hammer to go out and force these people into doing something. There's a due process. Ultimately, we will write citations to that individual if they don't come into compliance court. I think we've had this discussion before, that you understand that municipal court in this city cannot make somebody abate a violation. All they can do is fine them. So, if they write it, if we write a ticket, they're assigned a penalty, and they pay the ticket, the process starts all over again. We can't make them come into compliance through that process. If we just keep writing tickets, they keep paying the tickets, the process just starts over again. I think this individual that we're talking about, this individual property, we're going to get compliance. I think ultimately, they can afford to maintain their property, and we're working on getting compliance. And, I think probably in the next two or three months, you're gonna see possible buildings taken down out there, and the fence either taken down or repaired, the old sign removed. Again, our nuisance ordinances, when you get into dealing with our nuisance ordinances, we're in a situation where our high grass and weed ordinance states that you're not in violation until your grass is over nine inches in height. So, again, you're gonna see some of these properties look like they're unmaintained, and that they got high grass and weeds on them, because nine inches of grass is pretty tall compared to what we're used to see when somebody's grooming their property. It's all about life, safety, health, welfare, how our codes are written. So, again, as we get into talking about this further, some direction comes from council for us to modify some of those ordinances, try to strengthen some of our authorities. Code enforcement would be more than willing to, you know, go out and enforce our codes and get people to come into compliance. And so, that's kind of where we're at in the process.
You mentioned due process, which obviously is an appropriate thing. But, once they, once, according to our local codes and ordinances, a citation is issued, the process and timeline that follow that citation before the individual ends up with a citation requiring them to go to court, a ticket requiring them to go to court, is, are those processes mandated by local ordinance or by state law?
Both processes are typically mandated by state and local law. Our situation that we're dealing with, so, just to kind of digress back into the process. Typically, when we get a complaint, we send a 10-day, a 30-day letter to somebody saying, you're in violation, you need to come into compliance, and we give them 30 days. After the onset of that 30 days or the passing of that 30 days, then we typically send a 10-day letter and ask them to come into compliance. After that, we tend to start writing citations if they're not working with us. If they're working with us and they're trying to mitigate the situation, we don't instantly write citations. Typically, in most cities, unless we get direction politically from the politicians, typically, we write citations as a last resort, because typically, we're writing them to our citizens. And so, again, if the, if the direction is given for us to do something different, that's typically what staff will follow. Kind of in defense of what I think's going on in the corridor right now and what's happened, is we went through the State Highway 146 expansion, and we had one code enforcement officer during a lot of that period. And, the direction that we were getting was that, as we go through the process, be more lenient on all these business owners and these property owners because of the impact of State Highway 146. They're all struggling. And, that's what we've been doing, with the intent and understanding that as the freeway neared completion, then we'd intensify our enforcement. And, that's what we're doing right now. You guys allowed us to hire another code enforcement officer, so we now have two. And, we're in the midst of, now that 146 almost is complete, 99% of the properties that I'm seeing on social media right now that we need to address, if I sit with any of you, I can show you what I got case files on every one of them. And, we're working on every one of those properties. And, many of the things, violations that have been identified, we were working on before they were even identified. And, by the end of this calendar year, probably 85% of those things are gonna be resolved, down to us even working on the substandard structures that are on the point and stuff. So, I just want to overemphasize, since you guys have given us the resources, since State Highway 146 is near completion, we are working on all this stuff. We understand that those things need to be addressed, and staff is working on those things. I just want to emphasize that.
Hey, one last thing. I've been, this is my eighth year on council. I've been bringing that up since the beginning. You know this, but, how many, have they gotten any tickets at all?
We have not.
Yeah.
We have not cited them. They, for the longest period of time, they didn't own the property.
Right.
It was owned by the Papas family.
Right.
They bought it and closed on it right as we were working on the PUD document, and then they took ownership of it. And, again, we here be business friendly, so as we were working on that property, they were gonna build a 12-story building there, and they were in the process of that before the economy slowed down. And so, we didn't want to go out and offend them through the process. But, at this point in time, the economy has slowed down their project, and we agree, and I think everybody's in agreeance, that they need to clean up the property, because it's probably gonna be another year or so, a couple of years before they even do anything with that property.
Perfect. That's answered my question. Thanks.
6.5, consider to take all appropriate action to approve Resolution 2025-09, authorization for acquisition of property for park use in the amount of $81,592, and authorize the city manager to expend funds and execute all necessary documents.
Move to approve 6.5.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. 6.6, consider to take all appropriate action to approve Resolution 2025-10, expressing support for HBE 4538.
Move to approve 6.6.
Any discussion? Everybody know what this is about? It's about the derelict boats? All in favor? Thank you. Is Representative Paul carrying that? 6.7, consider to take all appropriate action on the approval of a license agreement between the City of Seabrook and Pasadena Farmers Market DBA.
Move to approve 6.7.
Can we discuss a few things, the applicants here, too? Does she, can she come up and speak about a couple of concerns she has?
Yeah.
We forgot our flash drive, so would you?
Could you, could you speak, give us their name and address into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
What do I do?
They need your name and address.
Oh.
Just to represent your name.
Okay. Kayla Hensley, 515 Avenue H, Houston.
I know there was some discussion about the location, and the contracts written to have the one on 1209 Main Street. Is that still the location that you're interested in?
So, we're between that one and the community house. We like the community house, but our only concern was the working around other schedules, other scheduled events there.
So, I guess we'd like to, with the, with the city hall, we were kind of told that we'd have to work around other schedulings. And, we were wondering why, if we're willing to pre-schedule, why do we have to work around other?
I'm assuming there's city events that are planned. That's what they mean, unless it's already been booked. I tried to get a schedule, but I was late to ask for that. Does anybody else know why? Rachel? Do you have any idea? Did you know anything about?
Who, me?
Oh, do we know about the schedule for the community house for the rest of the year, and why they would, what, they would need to schedule around our city events that we have planned, or anybody else that's already scheduled that? But...
There's a lot less flexibility with using the community house because of the number of citizens and local people that want to rent that facility for multiple events, weddings, things. So, it's, the facility's used a whole lot more. When we got into the discussion of how to deal with this, at one point in time, Gail was communicating that she was gonna try to modify some ordinances. But, when we got into it, there's a difference between having special events on private property versus having special events on public property. And so, you're allowing a for-profit business to come in and use public property, and that's, you can't write a standard ordinance around that. It's something that has to come to this body for you to approve. And so, that's where this license agreement came from. That's why we came up with this. I believe Gail's had some communication. At one point in time, they wanted to use Metter Park, and then there were some concerns over that. And then, so what was offered to them was the piece of property on Main Street, which gave them a lot of visibility at that location. And, it's a piece of property that the city owns, that the city doesn't usually lease out to other people. So, it could be dedicated to their use. They can use it pretty much anytime they want, because it hasn't been, it hasn't been reserved to anybody else, and there's not a possibility for somebody to rent it typically. And so, that's where we, how we got to here. If we're gonna want to deviate and go back to the community house, then I think the same type of agreement can be addressed. It's just, we probably need to go back through and modify this agreement in some way, so that we can come back to council, and you guys, plus the layout, the times, the rental rates, the insurance requirements, all the stuff that's in this current agreement.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, if we're not certain, I don't know that we should vote on this yet. What are your thoughts?
I really like the community house. I like that there's already bathrooms there. There's concrete. My only concern was that, and then, we're not gonna use the inside, so I, we didn't really want to pay the full price for the community house, since we're not using the inside, other than the bathrooms. But, we were told that there's access to the bathrooms from the outside.
That's correct. I mean, we could, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, if I may.
Sure.
Look, I've been advocating for something like this for three years. Sean can tell you how long, how long ago we tried to get somebody like you to come in. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
I see the possibility of a great deal of synergy between what you're doing and what is already happening in parts of Old Seabrook. Having your place close enough to go to Damn Fine Coffee, to some of the other stores down there, close enough to walk from what you're doing over to Genuine Treasures. For that reason, I really like the idea of it over by Merlion's, but I understand the challenges that that creates for you. We need to find a way to work this out, because I want you here.
Right. We really like the location of that lot. The only issue is bathrooms, really. We're figuring out the porta-potties are kind of expensive.
So, the fee we're being charged for the lot that doesn't have any utilities is exactly the same, essentially the same fee as we would be using the city hall, which makes sense. There's utilities, parking here, and the other lot has nothing. It's just a lot, which is fine. It's a beautiful lot, and we love the location. And if we could use it, I love it.
Yeah.
We've been going on a dilemma back and forth on that. I like the visibility more. It's on Main Street. She likes being close to city hall and bringing more people here. So, that's something we've been going back and forth on. But, what I don't agree exactly on is, is just, there's no utilities there. So, it's just land. And, we do appreciate the communication back and forth.
And you need utilities?
But, exactly. Like, there's no utilities, and we're being charged like there is utilities.
Right.
It's just land.
I mean, you require utilities, though? Or, is that?
We really need water and restrooms mainly. It's, restroom usage is a problem.
Have any ideas for that, way around that, Sean?
Well, I mean, I think the situation is, is just as we go into the process, I think how often they want to hold this, there's probably gonna be some conflicts at some point in time where we're gonna tell them they can't operate. And I know there's a lot of planning around you, scheduling your vendors and all the things, and at some point in time for us to, at the last minute, say, somebody wants to use that facility, and now you have to negate all the stuff that you plan for that location, could be very problematic for y'all.
That's the reason.
Could they still use the facility if we're just using the outside, like the parking lot? Because there's still parking at the front and right next door, that, that business is, there's nothing there, right?
Yeah, but a lot of times, those events, we got limited parking over here, and a lot of times when they're holding those events, the occupant limit within that building's high enough that they're probably needing that parking area that's out there that you'd be setting up a lot of your vendors in. I mean, it...
So, Sean, if I remember correctly, it's by ordinance, actually, that citizens get preference for that facility right back there, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think typically.
Maybe we can find a way to solve the other problem, water and toilets at, over there by Merlion's. Because it's, if we could solve that problem, then that would be maybe not as perfect, but a 90% solution is better than...
Yeah, absolutely.
For sure.
Than zero, so...
Well, and Brian can correct me, but I believe there's water over on that property on Main Street. I know there's a couple hose bibs sticking up from when the property owner's owned in the past.
I saw some.
It, I think the issue more is probably the cost of restrooms. Within the resolution right now, what we're, what's being assessed or being considered by council is a $300 a day fee to rent that whole entire piece of property. I don't know if that's something you guys, if the...
But it also includes...
It sounds like the bathrooms are the issue, and the cost of the bathrooms versus the site. They have parking over there, because typically, when they're going to be holding their event, Merlion's not open. So, there's not gonna be anybody in that parking lot that's adjacent to that property. So, there's city-supplied parking or city-owned parking. It's in, right adjacent to that property, which gives them, so, again, I guess it's trying to figure out what's affordable to them versus what's in the resolution, what you guys are willing to consider as far as the cost of the lot itself on a daily basis.
I would support waiving at least a majority of the $300 fee to try and help compensate for not having restrooms over there. Because $300 isn't gonna affect our budget, but them being here, and the people they bring into town, and what they mean to the other business in the area, that will.
Well, and as you look at it also, this is, this resolution is created for a six-month review period. So, at some point in time, if they're being super successful, and it's time to re-review this after six months, if it's time to increase the cost of the property they're using based on the success that they're having in the business.
For sure.
During their business hours, then you guys have an opportunity to re-review that after six months.
And also, I'm sorry, it says that the utilities are not included. So, how would they, how would we do that? How would we charge them for that?
Right now, I imagine the water account's not even turned on over there. It's metered. So, at some point in time, however, we'd modify this resolution to allow them to use utilities as part of this agreement. The water, at some point in time, I think they would have to probably set up that water account. We'd have them set up that water account. And then, the usage, they would just be billed for it, like anybody else.
Mike?
Just a quick couple of comments also. Rob, I agree with Rob, first of all, maybe discounting if possible. Do we own any portable restrooms? We typically rent that, right? We do?
We don't.
So, I mean, if we were to charge them possibly full rate, I don't know how much waste management would get us some restrooms, maybe temporary, just a thought, throw that in for them, just talking out loud. Or, cutting the cost down, and that way, you can go rent the facility and portable restrooms and put it over there. But, I agree, I think that's a better location, and it makes more sense for us to do that. But, I want to help you wherever we can, because I agree.
Mike and Rob, I think, personal opinion, I think we'd rather get restroom help than a discount. I think it would just help overall more, because we don't mind paying if there's utilities, you know?
Yes.
It's more of a factor.
I don't know if that's a conflict.
Well, the costs, I think we need to analyze what the cost of those restrooms are, because the intent of this is not to have, as you guys are aware, we got ordinance against having porta-potties all over the place. So, I think at some point in time, the intent is they would bring in the porta-potties for their event, and within a day or so, they would leave. They're not gonna be out there permanently. I think the cost of those porta-potties, unless you guys are gonna subsidize this in some way, you're gonna want to know what that cost is before you go through the process of us paying for restrooms.
So, do you know what that cost is? How many do you actually need, and how many people do you expect to?
I think we're quoted, like, 750 was the lowest that we found.
It was three or four porta-potties, yeah.
Right.
So, a trailer, then, you're saying, not a, just a?
No, it was singular.
Single?
Right.
And how many did you say?
Four.
Four?
Seven fifty.
So, that'd be about 750, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
$750 for that one day?
For one day, yeah.
Yes, for one day.
So, there's gotta be other ways to go around. That's why we're like, hey, we love that place, but the porta-potties just aren't making sense.
Well, that's why I was considering if we can get maybe Public Works, and I don't know if it's a conflict, but to work with our contract.
Sure.
Place management and say, hey, we've got this. Is there a way, how much would it be to drop these restrooms there?
Sure.
And then have them find out what the cost is, and have you pay that cost.
Absolutely.
It may be a little cheaper than, I don't know if we could do that, but I'm just...
It's, I'm in construction. I deal with this all the time. Let's talk afterwards. Call me tomorrow, something.
Okay.
I'm confident that we can beat that price.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
In your other locations, how do you handle the restrooms?
We're under a huge pavilion that has electricity, water, bathrooms.
Okay, so that's the only location you're doing it at?
Right. We, I have it attached. It's the last page.
Otherwise, these markets are usually in parking lots, so they don't charge big fees, because they know there's no utilities.
Right.
So, if we didn't charge, I mean, would that... So if we didn't charge, I mean, would that be enough to, if we didn't charge for the property?
That's why I was telling you, I'd rather y'all help us with the restroom situation than, than me getting a discount.
I know, but what are you, what would be helpful? If we waived, for example, if we waived the rental for that property, would that help enough towards the restrooms to make that location?
We'd like to have enough restrooms to accommodate the amount of people we're expecting. And if we can get a good quote, then I think it could help, yeah. Absolutely.
Well, as I, as I said the last time that you guys came up, we love the idea. We're, we're really interested in doing it. And that's why I personally like the library or, cause they have restrooms already there and a nice parking lot. And Saturdays and Sundays, the library isn't used as much as we'd like it to be, but it would be a, a good lot. And plus you have parking across the street and in the parking lot. So anyway, I certainly think that that's a consideration. So where does that land? If you have three different locations, where does that end up?
Meter? You're talking about at Meter Park?
Yeah, yes. It's, I believe that you'd have to go through Harris County, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Because it's a Harris County property.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have to get Harris County permits anyway. We'll do, deal with the, the health department over there, so.
I don't think I'm understanding your question. So are you asking which location we're?
Yeah, I'm asking you, where does that location fit into the three that we're looking at? I know that we can, you must have considered that as a location as we talked last time.
So we did like the location. It's just this street is a lot more busy. So I know we'd get more traffic at our, at our event if we're on Main Street, right?
More residents would be able to.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question about that. And I know Old Seabrook would love to have this in Old Seabrook, no doubt, but.
And we love Old Seabrook.
It's just hard to solve all of the issues that, and what, and what compromises can we make to make it make sense?
Right.
Just a quick, sorry, just a quick question. I can talk to Merlion's?
Yes. Oh, restroom situation?
It's just they're closed.
They're closed while we're operating, so he's totally okay with us using the parking lot. It's just they're closed during our hours.
So what I'm hearing is, Sean, what I'm hearing is if everyone basically up here agrees they like this concept, they just want the city to be able to work with these people the best they can. So I guess that would be moving forward, whatever we can do to help. Let's try to get it solved. Cause I'm hearing everybody likes this idea.
No, and I think staff understands that. We're just trying to figure out some direction from council on, I mean, I kinda wanna emphasize this. We got one group that's coming in who wants to do this. I think the cities should be cautioned on subsidizing this because at some point in time, you're gonna have four or five other groups coming in and wanting to do it. And are you gonna treat all four, five, seven groups the same at some point? I, I, I think staff's, staff's recommendation is we work with them. We figure out how to get them on the, one of these pieces of property. But I would caution you all on subsidizing restrooms or stuff like that. Again, they're a for-profit business. And as we work through this, for the most part, we're providing them the property to operate on at a low, low cost, typically compared to what other businesses in the community are probably paying. And you want to be able to work with them and get them up and running. But also, some of that financial burden still needs to fall on the business that's gonna be operating in our city.
Sean, I got a question. The parking lot by the pool, was that ever taken into consideration?
I, I think that could be another location. Until you get in the summer months and the pool will be open.
Well, until the pool is redone.
Yeah, right now it's closed. But I mean, during this time, during the six-month period that we're discussing, if they were willing to use the pool, then yes. But we're not gonna be able to open up the restrooms at the pool for them, cause you got direct access to the water.
But you'd have them at Meter Park.
But they could go across the street to the bathroom.
Right, so that may, that may be a viable alternative.
But short term, yeah, over the next six months, you know, we're still going through the bond process of approval of the pool and stuff. So we're probably a good year out, year and a half out for having a pool. That parking lot is open and the restrooms are across the street, so that would be a good place that they could set up possibly also.
You'd have everything there.
I'm sorry?
You'd have everything there already.
At Meter Park?
That parking lot next to the pool?
Right. Okay.
And it's got restrooms.
But also, you know, I think that, you know, we wanna bring in more revenue to the Old Seabrook. And that would be a driver if you were in Old Seabrook. Can we at least just get a, a quote on, see how, if that's something that we wanna consider to give, to offer them our discount? If, if waste management can give a discount? And then you guys pay, you know, whatever they charge us, if that's an option that council agrees to. And then we'll bring this up to them at the next meeting.
I had one more concern with the waste. Is there like a city dumpster we could take the waste to, like the trash after the events?
How much waste is it?
I mean, our other events, we have maybe three or four fifty-five gallon trash bags.
Again, i- if we're gonna meet with them, I guess we can get with them and work out some more of these details. And then give you guys some options in the future of, you know, this is what, this, this is what the breakdown. I think at this point in time, I think there were some conversations. I thought we're all on the same page on the site. Now it sounds like we're not even on the same page on the site. I think we're trying to move this forward with you guys too, because they're in a situation, it sounds like you wanna have an event pretty soon. And if, we're not gonna have another council meeting until the first of May, so to even talk about this again. So as long as that's not gonna affect you guys operating and opening when you think you're going to, cause this is still gonna have to go through another process where you're probably not gonna complete this process until another couple of weeks or maybe four weeks from now as we go through the process.
Do you know why we wouldn't be able to do the basketball court at Meter Park? Like, is that like a, because that would be like something we could do before figuring all this out? Just so we could get the ball rolling, right?
Well, it, I think at this point in time, unless you're gonna do some sort of rental of that facility for one event or so, then if that, that's probably something that could be considered, be a one-off event and you're gonna be over there for a couple of days. And it could get you through this process, a true special events permit application to use that property, like we would for anybody else that's using it on a temporary basis. I think that's something that could be looked at, yes.
Okay.
I had just one other point. So if we went back to the property next to Merlion's and we were able to approve waiving the three hundred dollars for a month or two or three to get you guys up and running and we could reevaluate. It's really hard for us to start subsidizing businesses that are for profit when we don't really know the specific model. In other words, how many booths, how much money are we really talking about? And really what, what is it that you're gonna ask us to have to pay for? Cause now if we're talking about a dumpster of some sort or water and, and, you know, the, makes, it, it becomes more and more and more.
I think our biggest concern is just restrooms.
Sure.
We can deal with waste. It's not a, really not.
It seems like the vendors would be responsible for their own waste.
Yes.
Anyway, I'm just saying, for us to wanna start to subsidize, we really just need to see a more specific numbers so that we can see where we can fit in and maybe we can subsidize a startup.
Right. That's why we brought.
And let's see how successful you can make it. And, cause the most, more success, the more opportunity you might have going forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we have a motion in a second on this, but it doesn't look like we wanna, we're ready to vote on this. So, so who made the motion? Buddy, amend your motion to, to postpone it.
Okay, I, I move to rescind my motion to approve six point seven.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, the other, so.
We gotta vote on the other one?
Other motion?
Mayor, I don't think we need a motion. I think staff.
Yeah, just staff, it's staff recommendation.
Staff will, staff will go, but we'll contact them tomorrow and start working through the process of refining this a little more and, and get something that can come back to y'all. And I think during that period, if they make application for a special events permit to use Meter Park for a one-time event for two days, we can probably work through that process.
Okay. Thank you. Seven point oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point oh, discussion. Seven point one, discussion on the involuntary terminated status with the Secretary of State by Caruthers Coastal Garden, five oh one C three, is associated with the agreement for the development, operation, and maintenance of the project.
Um, I put this on the agenda when the status was still in involuntary terminated status. Thankfully, it is back in active status as of last Tuesday. I just wanted, just to clarify that it wasn't a clerical error. The registered agent retired. Then there was a, a notice sent out. There was actually a couple notices that's sent out. And a little concerned that the entity's not keeping up with the paperwork that's very simply, simple paperwork. So I just don't know, I just wanna make sure that we, we are, they're keeping, you know, good housekeeping. And hopefully he was here tonight so I could, you know, remind him that when, he's the face of and founder of this entity. A lot of people think that he is actually a staff member. And I would encourage him to be respectful and polite to all people, including elected officials. And that's all. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Seven point two, discuss potential amendments to chapter twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash fifty-one, Mobile Food Vendor Regulations of the City of Seabrook Code of Ordinances and Direct Staff Regarding Preparation of a Revised Ordinance for Future Council Consideration.
Okay, this is another, we've talked about it a couple of weeks ago. After talking to some of the business owners that own food trucks and looking at the Harris County requirements, it seems our ordinance is a little bit heavy on things that's already covered by Harris County. And Sean also made a note that there is House Bill, I don't have the number, but it's in the works to be statewide licensing and it'll be eliminating city and county, the need for city and county permits. Hopefully, I don't know if that goes through or not, but it's in the works. But I, if you guys have a chance to look through the, what I had suggested, there's, you know, lowering the permitting fees. Most people don't have them four times a year. It's one, it's an annual. And ours seems, ours is a thousand dollars a year just for permit. I mean, the, the Harris County's doing the inspections. They're making sure they have all their, you know, paperwork. It's done annually. So a lot of these are just really from, they, for the city restrictions, like the twenty-five foot separation of property lines right away, existing buildings, things like that. There's hardly any places in the city that you can even find that you would work for this. Also, the paved parking service, uh, surface requirement. I mean, a lot of Old Seabrooks, gravel parking lots. I'm, I'm gonna go down the line, but if you guys have seen it all, if you have any questions, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda curious why none of the businesses have come forward requesting this. And the second thing is, in, in looking at some of your recommendations, if you consider the Seabrook Waffle Company, they're open from ten to two. So we could have a food truck come in there. If they wanted to lease, put a lease on their land, we could have a food truck come in there at three o'clock, stay till, and I think you removed the ten PM restriction too. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just saying for like a special events. I mean, even like if it was a.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if, if we were to prove your recommendations, one would be that somebody could come in, lease the land from Seabrook Waffle Company during their closed hours. And they would be in direct competition with LA Taco with the backyard, Damn Fine Coffee. And, and have a distinct advantage in the fact that the sticks and bricks have to pay out valorum taxes. That would be my concern. And I have no problem with food trucks. I just wanna make sure that we don't create an unfair competition with our, our sticks and bricks establishments.
Um, well, Damn Fine Pies has tried to work with the city and I think he's had some, you know, hasn't been successful or he got code enforcement out there on him. And the restriction is that you have to be three hundred feet from another business.
From another similar business?
From a food, food business. So.
You know, the city of Baytown does this. They don't have a problem. Lot of cities, Clear Lake Shores has food trucks. Lot of these businesses do it. And that's all, that's what Jackie's trying to say. If other cities are doing it and it's successful, because I've actually talked to their mayors and they said, yes, they make money off of the food trucks, then we could do it too. And if we have to look at some different ways or the way our stuff is written, then I think we need to do that. But it's, it's successful in a bunch of other cities. The food truck is not the food truck of old. It's, actually, they turn out really nice. And a lot of them end up being brick and mortar anyway. But the point is, we should be able to work this out. And it sounded like before, most of us were in agreement that we would like the food trucks. Of course, we don't wanna put our brick and mortar businesses, especially restaurants, in jeopardy. But at the same time, I think we could make this work.
Any more, any more discussion?
Just a quick question to, since Damn Fine Coffee has been in discussion with the cities about their food truck. Are you aware of what the?
So, they came in and they pulled a permit to operate over at the Bold House. They were doing coffee and breakfast there. They had an agreement with the Bold House to operate when they were not operating because you can't park in required parking. And there's a requirement that you gotta be at least twenty-five feet away from a property line. So it worked at that location when they were not in operation because they could park in the middle of the parking lot. The issue is, they needed to be twenty-five foot away from any property line. So at that location, it kinda centralized them in the parking lot. And they wanted to either move to one side or they wanted to move closer to the front for visibility. And that setback requirement created some limitations for that. The other issue that most of our food trucks are having, and again, it gets into the discussion of how mobile do you want these things to be? Because the biggest complaint is they don't like using the generators. Cause if they're parking in a central location for seven or eight hours, the expense to run that generator is so great that it's taking away a lot of their profits. And the Bold House wanted to go over it. I mean, Damn Fine Coffee wanted to put a tee pole, a temporary electric pole that they could hook up to and make it more of a permanent use. I know one of the things that Jackie was recommending in her ordinance was the requirement that they had to leave every day. They couldn't be stored on the property. It's, it, it kind of, in our current ordinance, it's not black and white to that. It insinuates that you should be doing that. And so we've had some occurrences with the Snow Cone tr- trailer that was at Sam's Boat and a couple of the other locations where they weren't really moving. And at some point in time, we have to really watch these. And that's why we would recommend that we still have a lot of inspection authority cause Harris County Health is not in our city very often. And you get a situation where we need to be able to go check to make sure they're going to the commissary every day and doing those things. And Harris County's not gonna be here to do those things. And so we'd like to maintain that authority. And plus, when you have an ordinance that gives us authority, we need authority to be able to go out and enforce it and do these inspections. When we went through the process of creating this ordinance, it was a bunch of meetings. We went through a lot of discussion. And it was, we never allowed food trucks in the past. And so it was a test ordinance to get something on the books, to see how this works and see what needs to be changed, modified as we use this ordinance. The, also, the intent was to keep these trailers mobile in nature, where they weren't setting up. And now we had a bunch of food trucks that are acting as permanent businesses in our community that are mobile food vending units. And so again, if the philosophy's changing on this, staff's more than willing to work through the process. But we need some guidance on how flexible you want this to be so that we can create an ordinance that reflects what you guys would like to see.
I like the flexibility. I think we, you know, like Jackie's just saying, remove the twenty-five foot. One of our former mayors used to have a barbecue hut, Herb's Barbecue Hut. He toted around everywhere and sold barbecue all over the place. It was really good. It was good barbecue, you know? It helped him a lot. So this is where I get, I understand, you know, we, we went from, we totally said no food trucks. So we were wanting food trucks and obviously, we kinda let this slip. I guess I'll blame myself or council because we thought we kinda had something where we'd start seeing more. And then all of a sudden, it kinda stopped again. And I guess there's just too many regulations. And we're not trying to say, just, you know, throw caution to the wind. But we're saying like, on a twenty-five foot setback, if it was working at the Bold House, if he was. Because if it was working and then we go, well, you can't be where you were, you have to be more in the middle, and it didn't work. If no one's at the Bold House during the day at all, when he's there, this should work, that should have worked. So let's look, let's go back, I would guess, and look at some of these that are a little bit too restrictive and either modify them or get rid of them so then we can bring the food truck in.
Right. I think it comes to a point, if we just want to talk about the 25 feet. You know, our, all of our brick and stick buildings are, have an ordinance of 25 feet from the property line. And so now we're bringing in a, a business that we're saying, well, we're just kidding. You can park two feet away from your neighbor. That, that's not, you know, I don't, I don't think that's right. You know, there is restrictions and, and we have to uphold them. You know, if you want to pull up a, a business, pull it up to your neighbor's fence line and say, sorry, you know, the city said it's okay. That, that's, that's not realistic. I want food trucks too. You mentioned Clear Lake Shores. Clear Lake Shores has a, has a food truck park, you know? They, they don't allow them in their neighborhoods. You know, they have a park and you said the same thing about League City. We're not comparing apples to apples. So, so if you're looking at a food truck park, I'm all for it. You know, we have, we have locations where that could possibly work. But to let them run loose through the city and let them park wherever the hell they want to on, on lawns because you're saying we don't want paved surfaces, you know, where are we going to put them?
No one's saying just they can be parked on lawns and right next to a house. That, that's not what we're talking about. We're, we're using a very specific one at the Bold House. That's a very specific one.
Okay, so you can waive that?
You could, you could waive it at that one location, you could. And, but at the same time, no one's talking about parking a food truck in someone's yard.
So where's a pay, so where's a gravel surface in, in Old Seabrook?
You know, maybe the best-
It's going to be next to somebody's house.
Okay. Maybe the best thing is that, taking a look at our ordinance and make it like a special use permit for any variance they want. Like if it's a 25 feet and, and it's not going to harm anybody like at the Bold House, maybe that's okay. But to, to go through and give it blanket, you know, I hear what you say, Joe, nobody will ever park in a yard until they park in the yard. And so then, then we're stuck with it. But I would like to hear, you know, if somebody has a food truck and there's an issue with an ordinance or something like that, that is restricting their business, then let's come forward and, and just like with the market, the farmer's market, find out what we got to do and see if we can come up with a compromise.
It's listed as a discussion item. We talked about it a few weeks ago. That's why I'm bringing it back up. And maybe we could do a 25-foot separation of residential property lines and keep it like that. But, you know, if you're, we're concerned about residential. But I have, I have read a lot of the surrounding areas' ordinances and ours is a lot more restrictive and they don't have all, all these little-
Like, like Sean said earlier, we passed this, what, a year ago, two years ago?
It's been-
Or has it been longer?
It's longer than that.
It's been since- It's, it was created in '24, it looks like.
In what?
No. No, we, this is, this is years.
It, it's been-
Yeah, I was looking on this document.
It's been since, it's been since I've been on council anyway.
That's when I-
But it's a relatively new ordinance. That when we did it, we said, we need to figure out how this is going to work and make changes as necessary.
Yeah.
The, some of the things that we could consider is the setback, how that would be used, or if there's a, what do you do to make exceptions? And, and those kind of things. We want to allow food, food trucks the opportunity to come in. We don't want them to be permanent. We don't want to give up inspection authority. Health and welfare thing.
Right.
But we would love to have them here. So let's, let's take a look at this ordinance and see what we can tweak. You know better than the rest of us what people complained about on this ordinance. So let's take a look at this ordinance and see what we can massage on it to make it more accessible for food, food trucks to come to Seabrook.
I think, I think coming up with recommendations as to what to do with some of these restrictions, rather than toss the restriction out, I think is, is more important.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, let's, let's look at them one by one and say, where, where can we bend and where can't we bend? But we have to have a solution, not just criticizing it.
Yeah.
So. Twenty, yeah, we passed it in 2019.
So what staff will be looking for is, I can go through and kind of make some modifications. So what I'm hearing is you guys want to create some flexibility to allow food trucks more in our community. But you still want them to be transient in nature. You don't want them to be setting up. So Clear Lake Shores is a prime example of this. You can go over there, you, across from Skippers and Okies right now, there's a yellow food truck there with some makeshift structure all built around it. And it's turned into a little taco restaurant on that one piece of property. That's not something you guys want to see throughout the city. That's a question to you guys I'm asking. So, and you don't want them to be able to create, create an ordinance that creates an element where you could interpret that it's a food park. So in my opinion, you created, allow them start connecting the permanent utilities, hook into electric and stuff like that. It creates the opportunity that you are facilitating it being permanent in some sort of nature. You still want to keep it transient in nature somehow. And whereas things are coming and things are going.
Yeah. And that's why I added that, to, they have to be, move every day. And they're also required to have their commissary little schedule on and available for anybody to come-
Okay. And I can work on this. I mean, it's, I mean, again, when we created it, I say this, you guys all come and create these ordinances? All our ordinances are fluid. I mean, you, they can be modified at any time. We do our best attempt to create something that works. And as we go through the process, there's an opportunity to make modifications and changes to morph it and to make it work better. So I'll work on this. I'll put it on my list of stuff to do.
Okay. Thank you. Seven point three, discussion regarding the authorization of the expenditure of $2,000 for the Christmas Boat Parade to be taken from the general fund.
Okay. So I brought this back up because I still haven't gotten the answer. But to, to refresh everybody, in 2017 to 2021, the mayor was using his stipend or his money to fund the Christmas Boat Parade. He said he didn't want to do that anymore. So then the EDC took it over and they did it from around 2021 to, or 2022 to 2023. They decided they didn't want to fund the $2,000. Well, all of a sudden, in 2024, it came back onto the general fund. But we had voted back in 2017, it was not going to be on the general fund. So my question goes back to, and I've talked with the city manager about this, but we didn't get, there's no answer to who authorized it? How did it get back onto the general fund? And who, who was the one that put it, put it to the general fund? And I'm still asking those questions. I haven't gotten the answer yet.
Any more discussion?
Well, so there's my point right there. So that's one of the other reasons I brought up the DOGE. If no one can answer where the $2,000 came from and how it got back onto the general fund, then I have, I still have those questions.
Well, I, I think, I'll make an attempt to address the question, is I think it was probably the interpretation of staff that council as a whole supported the boat parade. And at some point in time, an invoice came for us to participate. And the city manager by charters authorized to make, approve expenditures up to $50,000. So the interpretation was made that there's a general consensus to support it. And it was approved by the city manager to pay that $2,000 out of general fund to support the organization, that the consensus of the body as a group is supporting.
Sean, I appreciate that. It was actually a very good answer. I've been asking this since January. And, and you're now, this is the first time, it's now April, mid-April. And that's the, I, no one's, again, when people get upset, no one's actually wanting to beat somebody up or knock them in the head. It's just, we want an answer. There's the answer, that the city manager approved it because, assuming that we all support the Christmas Boat Parade, which of course we do. But I think it would have been a simple answer back in January, just to say, hey, by the way-
I think if you don't want to take it out of general fund, we can't take it out of hot tax because there's, don't put heads in bets. EDC doesn't want to fund it.
Right.
So where, where are we going with this? Where, where, where else was the money going to come from?
Okay, we-
A boat parade, is that what you're looking for?
You didn't obviously listen to me. I just said-
Well, obviously, I haven't, but I don't understand where we're going with this. This is the third time it's been brought up.
It's actually-
We've explained it each time.
It's actually the fifth time this has been brought up since January. So the reason I was asking that is, we stopped funding this in 2019. We said we were not going to fund it. I was on council. We said council was not going to fund it. And then it was going to go to EDC and it come out of hot tax because we said we weren't going to fund it. So that's why, that's where I'm going with it. No one could answer the question until tonight. So I think it's actually a pretty simple question. I just thought I'd get a simple answer back in January and I didn't. And to, to move money around or to, to play, in my mind, a game and not explaining it back in January, that's an issue. And a lot of the citizens had that same question.
Yeah, a lot of them. We done with this? Seven point five, discussion regarding the maintenance of the properties located in 3325 Nassau Road 1. Oh, I'm sorry. Four, discussion. Discussion regarding the bond language for the police station located on Highway 146 at Meyer.
Mayor, probably be appropriate for me to address this at first. I did discuss this with staff and we came up with a, kind of a general schedule of what happened. I'd like to just explain that to you and to the public first and then we can entertain some questions. Basically, what happened on January the 23rd, council met, I believe y'all remember that meeting, and we discussed options for the new police station. Y'all voted on option B, which was the, the wraparound southeast corner of Meyer and 146. But obviously, we didn't own the property at that time. So what we did at staff levels, work with bond council to adjust the bond language to expand to allow for land acquisition as well. So we brought that general bond language back to you at, I forget the exact meeting, where it was voted on and so we could call the election and had the proposition language in it. But it didn't identify specifically the property. And I think, Joe, that was some of the issues that you had at 146 and Meyer. But it lawfully couldn't because we didn't own it. But really, the, the message that staff got and the direction that staff got was that we're going to expand the scope of the bond language to include the land acquisition so that, you know, we're in the process currently of trying to get the property under contract. We're negotiating with the landowner. And sometime after the election, hopefully, we'll be able to close on that property and move forward, if the proposition is favorable towards the issuance of the debt. That's kind of the general plan right now. I know there was some confusion about the scope of the language, the bond language itself, or the, the proposition is, is broad. It doesn't identify a specific location because our, our primary location at this point is, again, a property that we haven't purchased yet. That's all I have, Mayor. So yes, questions?
Okay. So, and, and that's why I brought this up. Because Buddy and I talked after our last meeting. And on January 23rd, just for the people to understand, Buddy made the motion for the police station to be on the bond and a location at 146 and Meyer. The way I'm understanding, well, let me go on. Then we have the next meeting and we voted on, you know, the-
General bond, uh, ordinance.
Like a general ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So that's like twice. But here's the point. Then we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago or a month ago and it was said up here at council, an open session, that, oh, well, if they vote yes for the police station, it can be anywhere we want it, anywhere in the city. And I was like, whoa, wait a minute. We voted on 146 and Meyer. So my, my, this is my legal question back. We actually had an executive session a little bit about this. We should have never technically put, when we voted in January 23rd, that we, we should not have put a location exactly at 146 and Meyer because we didn't know the land, correct?
Well, take a step back and think of it this way. You weren't voting on the actual bond issuance or the, the election itself. You were just voting on direction for staff to work with bond council to make sure that the bond ordinance captured everything that you intended it to capture. So the misunderstanding, I think, was the fact that the January 23rd meeting was not a vote on the bond or the, putting the bond on the ballot. It was just a, it was giving direction to staff and to bond council on how to word the bond ordinance calling the election.
Okay.
That probably should have been identified a little clearer, but it was not, so.
And, and that's my point. That's where I, that's, there's frustration from citizens saying, hey, wait a minute. I was at the council meeting or I watched it and they thought it was, you know, bond and this. So I guess maybe it should have been more of a discussion if it was just for direction for staff, because I don't think you'd have-
Well, we needed form, we needed some formal direction. So a, a motion was requested just so that we could give bond council the exact-
And, and this is again, why some people say, and this is citizens saying it, like it's a bait and switch. You voted, they heard that, and then it comes, well, it was interpreted this way. And then the future council can put this police station anywhere it wants. That's, there, there's, I'm just telling you that they're frustrated. That's, that's why I brought this up. I just wanted to be able to clarify it so they understand how it all went down because they didn't before.
I think that's fair. I would say this though, that it's staff's direction at this point, that we're going to proceed with trying to negotiate either a, a letter of intent or an earnest money contract or some kind of unimproved land contract with the property owner to bring to you as soon as possible about this issue. So again, we are moving in the direction of that site being the, the choice of council unless council tells us otherwise. At this point, that is, that is the direction that council, that staff is moving in.
And then my last point on that is, unless council says, meaning, so if you're on council on January 23rd, you think one thing and then a new, future council can come in and just erase what you did. That was the only reason it made it onto the, was approved 7-0, is that night. Because everybody said, yeah, we hear the people, because there was people here to talk about it. And the main thing they heard was, the people really wanted it, if they were going to do it, would be the location was 146 and Meyer, so.
Mayor, I don't have anything further unless there's additional questions.
Anybody else? Moving on. Discussion regarding the maintenance of the properties located at 3325 Nassau Road 1, 3329 Nassau Road 1, and 3345 Nassau Road 1.
So this is where the boat trailers are? And so I guess we're back to kind of the same thing. Those boat trailers have been there a long, long time. I understand at one point, you know, they was kind of in and out, they were getting used. But then when Margaritaville was going to come, they removed most of them. But there's still some there and the fence is starting to look dilapidated. You got the vines growing up like that. Is there any plan of that getting cleaned up at all?
Yeah. We'll, we'll continue to look at that piece of property. They have been mowing that grass, bringing in compliance. There's no regulatory authority we have to go make them do things with the trees and the shrubs. It's an undeveloped piece of property. The use of the boat trailers at that location, being able to store them, that's a grandfathered use. If they ever terminate it for a six-month period, then they lose that grandfathering and they won't be allowed to have that use there anymore. But we've been monitoring it. They haven't suspended that. There is some of the old black fencing material that they had screening on that property. So we'll look into that. So it is something that code enforcement can continue to look at. And if there's any violations, we'll address them.
And anything on the other properties that were listed here?
All, all three of those properties, we worded it this way because there's three tracks of property there and we wanted to hit all three tracks. That's why they're addressed that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Seven point six, discussion regarding the City of Seabrook light ordinances.
Okay, Sean, we've talked about this one before too. Again, you know, all the lights are supposed to have deflectors, you know, in the ordinance. And there's a lot of lights that don't. So is there any movement to try to get the lights into compliance with the light ordinance?
Yeah. Well, there's, how our light ordinance is currently written, it doesn't say that they have to put reflectors on them. It says that they have to contain their lighting within the boundaries of the property. Yeah, well, there's, how our light ordinance is currently written, it doesn't say that they have to put reflectors on them, it says that they have to contain their lighting within the boundaries of the property. And so there's two different types of lighting. There's lighting that comes off of a piece of property, and there's ambient light that glows off of the property. There's two different things. And so when we, when anybody develops a piece of property, we make them do a photometric survey. We, there's an engineer that creates that document for, that shows how the design of the lighting system is, and how it's gonna comply with our ordinance, to make sure the lights aren't actually, the lumens aren't coming off of the property. If there's particular locations that somebody wants us to look at, to see if they're in violation of our light ordinance, please forward that to us, because code enforcement goes out and looks at it on a regular basis. They're working on a complaint right now, and it's not even one of our citizens that's complaining. It's one of our properties that are on, one of our major thoroughfares, and that the light's actually shining into a backyard of a resident in El Lago. So we take that stuff serious, we enforce it. So if you forward those complaints to us, we'll definitely look into them.
Okay, appreciate that. And, you know, mainly, it's, you know where I'm talking about, too, on, anytime you're driving on any of the road, and you have just a bright light shining in your face, it's just not safe. So that's, that was the main reason I brought that up. Thanks. Because I brought this up before, just wanted to see where we're, where we're at. Thanks.
Okay. Seven point seven. Discussion regarding the progress of plans for Pine Gully Pier.
So, I wanted to, you know, sometimes it's on the update, sometimes it's not, and so I wanted to specifically put it there, just to see where we're at on that.
So, Gail has been in communication with the engineer late, late this afternoon, prior to being able to really look at it and forward out. We did get something back. We'll be reviewing it, make sure it makes sense to us, and then that information will be forwarded out and be put on a future agenda for you guys. We did get something back from the original design engineer for the pier that we got the original last design from, showing the modifications and the cost differences to do some of the recommendations that have been brought up, and we'll be able to share that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Eight point O, new routine business. Eight point one, presentation on monthly financial report for March twenty-twenty-five. Mike?
Pardon? Oh. I gotta drive.
So tonight before you is our March financial report. Again, it's kind of showing our, what y'all approved as the budget back in September, and where we're, where we stand based on that. Moving forward, we're about halfway through the year. As you can see, our sales tax are down about four, four percent. Our franchise tax, down three percent. The offset to that is our surplus in our expenses has been roughly at six hundred and eighty thousand. Overall, our starting fund balance is nine million dollars. We're projecting a ten million, ending fund balance of ten million, based on these projections. Any questions on those items, or anything you would like to discuss further? Again, here's a comparison of our revenues by classification. If y'all would like to peruse them, I don't want to bore y'all reading through the ups and downs, although, maybe Sean can play that, that bridge overlay music and spice it up a little bit. Our comparison, showing our, what, what, what we collected on sales tax for the month of March. Our budget was one forty, oops, excuse me, one slide. One ninety-one. We came in at one sixty-four, hundred and sixty-four thousand. Again, quite the, the monthly shortfall there on sales tax. When you compare to last year, we were nineteen thousand over our last year's number, so from month to month, the sales tax fluctuates. Like I said, we're running currently a shortfall of four percent on that.
The trend on sales tax. Have we compared us with other cities to see where their sales tax? It seems to be a-
Across, yeah, across this, we've looked at city, you know, local cities, as well as just across the state, and sales tax seems to be down anywhere between five and, and twelve percent. So, I don't think, I think it's more global, or state, statewide, rather than just specific to the City of Seabrook. I mean, we're coming off of a-
That's what I'm hearing from other cities, that, that they're all looking at a, at a, a sales tax deficit. In four percent, I've heard a much larger than four percent sales deficit.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, with the summer months coming up, that will, that will turn around, and, or at least stay, stay flat from here on out, and we do hit, you know, that four percent mark. Our tip, we typically do have pretty healthy summer months, you know, May through, through September, so I'm optimistic, but we'll see how it turns out.
Okay.
Again, we kind of break out by category. Our, our personnel forecast to budget, everything is in pretty good check. There is a overrun in human resource. As y'all know, our HR director retired unexpectedly, so we had not budgeted for that retirement. All the other departments seem, seem in line, or under budget. Here's our general funds, supplies and materials. Again, we're coming in under budget there. Not sure that Doge can help out on that, but we can, we can see if we can tighten that General fund services, same thing. You know, a lot, a lot of these, right now, it's showing a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, and a lot of the, these expenditures will happen later in the year, and the directors just haven't gotten, gotten back to me with all their final projections. Moving on to enterprise fund. Here we have some additional shortfalls in revenue. I'm just nothing but delight tonight, shortfalls. As you can see, we're running a two percent deficit in our, both our water and sewer revenues, and just add a one percent shortfall in sanitation charges. The good news is that our, these costs are, correlate back to our expenses, so in our service category, that's seven point one million that we had budgeted, we're currently running a surplus of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, again, a lot of our, a lot of these charges, the revenues are, are generated off our water cells, and same with the sewer, the, it's all generated off the amount of water that runs through the system. So, we're currently experiencing a surplus in having to purchase water. A lot of that's due to rainfall, and people not using as much water, so. Here we go into the comparisons by category, for all y'all's reading pleasure. And again, this can be found on our website, so you at home can follow along as well. Just shows our, can y'all see that? It's tiny.
I thought, I thought it was just my eyes.
Do I have touchscreens?
There you go. That just shows, wow, you still can't read that. She got good eyes. Again, find it online. This basically just shows you our, our budget to our actual, and then our actual to the last four years, in, in a graph presentation, so y'all can kind of see where we're stacking up, or, or in this case, falling short on our, on our revenues. Here's kind of a summary of our budget to actuals by department in the enterprise fund. As you can see, all the departments are coming in under budget, with the exception of our billing and collection, and that's largely due to the cost for, that we're charged for credit card payments. So, we, we increased that by, I believe, thirty thousand this year in the budget, and just more and more people are paying online. There's just a fee associated with that. Enterprise personnel. Joe, thank you for pointing out, so it wasn't Kevin that was throwing us off in, in the water budget in the last meeting that I presented, when we had, we actually had two retirements, and then we failed to move out one of the personnel who had been in the water department, who had gotten moved over to enterprise fund, so there were some extra charges. So, those have been taken, taken care of now, and as you can see, both water and sewer are, personnel are in, in line on their budgets. Supplies, again, Brian and Jesse are doing a good job of controlling their expenditures that are coming in under budget. And again, here's the services I was, I was talking about. As you can see, the charges in the water department are running a surplus of a hundred and sixty-two thousand. That, that definitely impacts the revenue on, both in water and sewer, when we go to Here's our infrastructure budget by department, water and sewer. As you can see, we are running a twenty-six thousand dollar surplus. Looks like Brian and Jesse need to get busy spending some of that. Only six months left. And then our, our capital. And again, they're, they're likely just behind on, on some projects. I'm sure that will be more flatlined by the time we meet at the end of September. Hotel motel tax here, oh, our bright and shiny revenue stream, we're actually over on our revenue, our budget of revenue by fifty-three thousand dollars. Amanda's doing a good job keeping the expenses down, so we're currently showing a return to fund balance of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Again, EDC, they're currently, it's a less than one percent shortfall on their sales tax compared to their budget. And they're, again, they've working on some incentive projects with the city manager and some businesses. We're currently showing that fund balance going from four point three million to three point seven million. And finally, crime district. Again, somewhat of a shortfall on our sales tax. Interest income is higher than their budgeted amount, and the chief's doing a good job of budget control. Return to fund balance of eighty-nine thousand. That concludes my March report. If anybody has any questions, or is still awake.
So, on the, the fee for the credit cards to pay online?
Mm-hmm.
All departments take credit cards to do that, or, because you said that this is what caused the-
Yeah, they do. And we've increased all the department budgets on, on those. However, so the way that credit cards are charged, or the fees are charged on your credit card, it's by dollar amount, and then depending on what card you're using, like, so, you know, if you're using the Capital One that's sponsored by the Viking, you know, you might only, might only be charged one percent. If you're using a different credit card company, then our credit card clearing company will charge us six and a half percent. And so, those fees are tacked on to the overall expense of, that's charged. There's been discussions in, in years past, I don't know if with this council, but I know it's been brought up on passing those fees along to the citizens, becomes a, kind of a weird game of, you know, trying to balance out what's the right percentage. And in addition, it kind of is factored in. It'd be like double charging them, because we kind of factor that in to, when they do the water rate model. That's part, one of the expenses that they consider when they're setting that water rate, so.
Well, that's, that's why I brought up the Doge thing earlier, because that's one of the things that Doge looks into, just to try to help. It's, it's not a bad thing, it's actually a good thing, but-
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
Okay, everybody can wake up again. Eight point two. City manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation proj-
action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, and the city of Seabrook CIP projects.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief. I'd like to start out with the boards and commissions. The open space and trails committee will meet next on May the 1st. EDC met on April the 10th. As part of their agenda, they considered and approved a sales tax rebate incentive request from Driver and Rescue LLC, Barge 295, in the amount of $30,000 for a period not to exceed 10 years. They also considered and approved a small business development incentive of $50,000 for the same project to be issued upon receipt of a certificate of occupancy, confirmation of an increase to 10 full-time employees, and verification of at least $200,000 in capital expenditures. They considered and approved a commercial facade incentive in the amount of $30,000 for 5735 Bayport Plaza LLC. The project is located at 5735 State Highway 146, and the, the facade improvements will be paid upon completion. They considered and approved the reinstatement of the Director of Economic Development position under the leadership of the city manager, with an increase in funding not to exceed $60,000 for the remainder of fiscal year 2025. Those items there will all be on your future council agenda for you guys to confirm those, those modifications. The Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to meet on April 24th. They will be discussing different types of impervious pavement methods, along with possible modifications to the zoning ordinance related to landscaping regulations, and the maximum lot coverage of impervious materials within the front yard of a residential property. The next item I'd like to counsel, to address is CIP projects. W16, Old State Highway 146 Waterline Interconnect. The contractor is currently tying into the existing water line on the south side of the project, and has started their testing. No schedule is available yet for the meter vault, so they're working through the process. The estimated completion date for this project is May of 2025. W31, Seascape Waterline. Currently, we have two crews out there working on this project. As of today, they've installed 4,315 linear feet of 8-inch PVC water line, and the estimated completion date for this project is August of 2025. WW16, these are the portable generators that have been approved through our processes. The purchase order has been sent to the, to the company that's going to be providing those, and we're currently waiting a delivery schedule. And just to give everybody an update on the Veterans Memorial repair, we have removed that tee pole. The conduit has been put in place, and we're currently working with McDonald Electric to come out and make the final connections. If you haven't been out there, there won't be a meter next to the Veterans Memorial. That meter's actually back on the street by Merlion, and you won't have that impairment of the meter being there at that location. And then finally, we are working with Text Dot. We've contacted Text Dot. There's been a lot of conversation on social media about the condition of their landscaping, the stuff they're responsible for maintaining over the next year, and they're lacking in some of their weeding and some of those things. So we have reached out to them. We're working through the process of trying to figure out how them, how they could do a better job. And then just finally, Weber continues to work on completing their final punch, and hopeful, we're hopeful at some point in time, the project will be totally completed. So that concludes my report, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Hey, Sean, thanks for the memorial. That looks a lot better over there. I know they had a paint on the sidewalk. I guess we can pressure wash that off. They orange stuff, but that's, that's not right now. It's just when they're done. But it looks way better. Plus, it was actually kind of dangerous, the way that thing was leaning, so. And then the, the last one is on Text Dot. They, the people at Dairy Queen are very happy that they put sod along that little curve where their drive-through is, because the mud was washing down into their thing. They were hoping they could get a curb, because the other business, the taco place, got a curb. There's angles just as much or more. They were hoping to get a curb. There would only be about 20 feet long, but anyhow, they're really hap, happy and wanted to say thank you for the, getting the grass put in there on the side, so, thanks.
Mayor and council, your next meeting is scheduled for May 6th at 6:00 PM.